Won't be in the tents tonight. Mr. Waldinger. Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Chair Magrino.
Here.
Vice Chair. Mr. Selepus.
Here.
Ms. Corville.
Present.
Very good. Any comments on the March 14 minutes?
Yeah, they look good to me.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that the minutes from the March 14, 2024 regular meeting be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If this time take public comment on items not on the agenda. Does anyone have anything in the public to comment on for items not on the agenda? We'd ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address. Feel free to speak. Hearing none, move on to old business. That brings us to Frobe Gardens Residential Development.
Thank you, Mr. Magrino. As I noted in the packets before you, we do have an application that was continued from last time. This is old business. For the most part, everything is the same, same set of plans we'll be talking about tonight, as well as the same responses previously. There has been no change since that time we submitted everything for the, I guess it was the March 14 PC meeting. The only thing I will note is, since that time, council has reviewed one of the previous versions of Frobe 2. Remember, this is one of three versions, and they denied that version. And also, staff has met with the applicant on Tuesday regarding the plan to talk about potential ways to address some of the issues. So what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of go through real quickly, just to, you know, remind everyone of what we're talking about here and what the proposed development is. So again, for those of you who weren't here previously or new to this meeting, we're talking about a fairly large development on an 87-acre tract of land. It's proposed for single-family homes and single-family attached units, a total of 191 dwelling units. And like I said, 23 of those will be attached units or townhomes, and 168 of those will be single-family homes on quarter to a third acre lots. The layout is similar to the previous two versions with the exception of Phase 4 right here. This is the phase where you see the 23 townhomes. This is a new addition from the previous two versions of Frobe Gardens. The other thing I will note is, in Phase 1, there are a few additional single-family homes proposed here. So again, like I said, we, these are the same plans you saw last time. We have a lot of the same issues. In fact, all the same issues here have not been addressed. Some of those include, some more substantial ones include the fact that there is a gas well on the property. They need to identify it and then show some of the required easements, as well as how they plan on dealing with the existing well since it is an abandoned well. There's also some issues around the conservation residential inventory and site design process that we have. This has not, they have not gone through this for this particular version of the plan, so we're requiring them to do that. And one of the things that we believe here that would show are some of these larger white oak trees that we'd like to have preserved in future versions of the plan. There's also some traffic calming issues that need to be resolved. We also need to see an updated traffic impact study. This plan does show additional units that were not included in the initial traffic impact study. We also need some additional detail in regards to some of the parking and zoning requirements that will be impacted by the addition of the townhomes. So we're looking for some additional detail on that. So with that, what we really need from planning commission tonight is, first off, we need a recommendation on the plans as proposed. But in addition to that, and what I should note is that there is a time extension application before council coming up. Second, for this plan. So what we'd like, as staff, would like to see planning commission give a recommendation on that time extension. So with that, I'll note that the applicant is here. If you wish to have him speak, he's in the audience.
Mr. Schleger.
Thanks.
Quick question for you. So what's before us tonight is the same information as before this commission, our last meeting, in which this was tabled, correct?
Correct.
Now, I understand there may have been some discussions on the ninth, and then some information submitted this afternoon, but that number has been not reviewed by staff, our consultants, or this commission before this meeting this evening?
Correct.
Understood.
So with that, I mean, I'm asking you specifically, would you like this commission to take action on a recommendation on the plans before us this evening?
Yes, with a little, a little bit more information I'd like to add to the record in addition to what Mr. Holdren provided. So as was discussed, the density, the area, I mean, he's all familiar with that, has not changed since the last, since the last meeting, and based on the plans in front of you, that's unchanged. You know, we believe we have a code compliant plan subject to the planning director, township engineer, and township traffic engineer reviews. We did meet with the township staff and provided a formal written response to those, to those review letters. We agree to all review letter conditions, and we have provided an extension for consideration of the plan. And with that, as Mr. Holdren indicated, we agree there's, there's two options or actions. You know, in our opinion, option one would be approve, recommend approval of the plan subject to meeting the review letters, which again, brings us into code compliance, or table and accept the extension to a lot more time to meet those conditions and come back before this, this board.
Well, there would be a third option as well. We could recommend that council not approve the plan as it sits today because it's devoid of addressing these comments. Is that correct?
I disagree, being that we do have a code compliant plan subject to those review letters. And we're in agreement, and we've responded to those review letters.
When did you respond to those letters?
Today.
Today. Did we get the chance to review those letters and confirm?
No, we got it at 4:00 this afternoon.
Right. But like I said, I'm going on record to say, we intend to address all of those review letter, you know, conditions or, you know, comments, outstanding items as, as staff and your engineers see fit.
I can appreciate that. But what's before us tonight is an application that's the exact same as the previous month. I don't see, there's nothing additional here. I understand you submitted today, and I appreciate that. So I would, if we're to make, if this board is to make, this commission is to make a recommendation based upon the application today, we can do that. Otherwise, you're willing to make a request for an extension. I think that's more the appropriate way to go.
The only thing I will point out is, as far as tabling, I would not recommend for that because we're up against the time clock here. Council needs to act at the next.
They need to act.
Yes. Unless they grant an extension.
If not tabled.
Even at that point, they could then kick it back to planning commission if they really wanted to, if they grant the extension, but.
If council grants the extension.
If council grants the extension, but that's not happening to April 22nd. So that goes back to my point that we need to either basically approve, approve the conditions, or deny.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Is, is this board not able to accept an extension and take?
That is correct. Only our governing body does that.
We're here just, we're recommending body in this case. It's just a recommendation. Understood.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any audience comments on the matter? By all means, please state your name and address. I think we have to write down the name and address.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Especially the name.
Yeah. So my name is Aswarich Chada, and I'm a resident of Peters Township for the last 20 years. Again, I am, this is in regards to the Frobe Garden. Me and my husband have planned to invest, second, our second investments in here are in that area, and we are really, you know, just interested in investing in the preservation of Peters Township unique landscapes, right? I mean, the character, the rolling hills. This particular community is very close to the park, very close to communities with young families and children playing, and we are really concerned on the implications of something like a 191 dwelling unit nearby. Also, we think that's an addition of, I understand that the, you need to add houses in Peters Township. We fully support that agreement, but the fact that we also are really concerned on introducing urban housing like townhouses in this area where it is really going to impact the skyline of the entire township. Those things are, you know, can be seen everywhere, introduces a lot of traffic issues, lot of stormwater management utilities and things like that, you know, adding so many of the, so many issues in there. Days like today are not rare anymore, right? You see, we have to really figure out how we are going to manage the stormwater management introducing so many townhouses in there. So I really would like to request that the township seriously considers especially introducing townhouses, high-density homes, and with a big focus on intending the preserving open spaces, green spaces, for approving any additional housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this matter? Any commissioner comments on this matter? Hearing none? Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission does not recommend the Frobe Gardens residential development preliminary plan.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next order of business, we have new business.
Excuse me, sir, with your permission. Would, would it be possible, or could we request that the planning commission make a recommendation on the extension, on the extension of time?
Is that a second business item?
That actually was something I had asked that we.
Okay.
Do, so actually, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. So this is a recommendation on the time extension of the application on the agenda, on council's agenda for 4/22.
Yeah, you can see that the deadline is May 8th, and the very last time that, or yeah, basically, the only time council can act is on the 22nd of April.
Gotcha.
So by recommending the extension would put us outside of this timeframe?
Right. That allows to go further into the future, into July or August, whatever.
And that's.
I forget what the actual extension was for, but.
Okay.
It was probably 60 additional days, I would say.
Right, but if, and if we recommend that, and then that's ultimately approved, we're outside of the, we're not, we, if it's recommended at their requests, right, then.
Yes.
Then we would still be.
Okay. Thank you. It's recommended at the applicant's request.
And that, that's, that's different than going beyond the timeframes, right? Because if they've requested the, the extension and we give it to them.
So that we can go beyond our timeframe we were mandated by.
And then, so then it's okay, versus being up against it.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Understood. Okay. Speaking of that, may I have a recommendation on the time extension application before us?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna make a recommendation that, that the, that the planning commission deny or not recommend the 180-day time extension and require the applicant to meet the, meet the current deadlines.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to new business, Zaholski Planet Lots.
All right, just to provide some background on this plan, various concepts of a senior living facility and townhouse development on this property, the adjacent property to the east, have been shared with the township since 2019. Currently, these proposals are under the stewardship of separate developers. The applicant is pursuing the senior living facility proposal. Last May, they did receive approval for a use by special exception to operate a group living facility type B at the property from the zoning hearing board. Additionally, a zoning map amendment that removes the mixed residential overlay district from most of proposed Lot 2B, and a small section of proposed Lot 2A is pending. Public hearing on this proposal was begun at the council meeting on Monday. It has been tabled, and no action was yet been taken on that, though. All that being said, the property is located south of the McNary subdivision with access to East McMurray Road via a split frontage to the west. Several properties separate the southern boundary of the property from East McMurray Road, including that on which Fire Station 1 sits. Property is vacant and covered in woods. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two lots in preparation for the Smith Packet Land Development mill to be located on proposed Lot 2A. This lot comprises the western portion of the property, and Lot 2B comprises the remainder. The applicant has informed the township that they are not involved in any potential development on proposed Lot 2B. Both parcels, as presented at the time of this writing, comply with the dimensional requirements of the low-density zoning district under their current status as vacant lots. And there's a good, there's an example that shows where the current proposed rezoning line is compared to the proposed subdivision line. Pursuant to Section 385, 36B, 3A of the subdivision land development ordinance, all lots or parcels shall have direct access to a public or private street as provided in Section 385, 37 Streets. Proposed Lot 2B does not have direct access to any streets, therefore, it cannot be approved as proposed. Though two rights-of-way are shown as providing access to the property, the salvo is clear that direct access via a public or private street is required. At the very least, construction drawings and financial guarantee of improvements should be provided to ensure the plan does not create a landlocked parcel. The plan as presented contains significant issues, including the aforementioned lack of access to a public or private street to Lot 2B, the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which if enacted, would cause a zoning district boundary to cross property lines. Incorrect setbacks are shown on proposed Lot 2B. And construction drawings for any utility extensions, as may be necessary to ensure adequate access is provided on Lot 2B, would need to be provided before approval. In response to these issues, the applicant will likely be submitting a revised plan in the near future, and they are in attendance to present the proposed revisions. As the plan cannot be approved as presented, but the applicant has shown responsiveness in addressing the issues, staff recommends the planning commission table consideration to allow the applicant time to make the requested revisions. It should be noted, council must make a decision on the plan by July 10th unless an extension is granted.
So we're talking tabling versus extension right now?
Yes.
Right?
Extension is not necessary at this time.
Right. So if we extended, then we're looking at May, come back here, then up or down in May, and then.
They would have opportunities in May and June.
May and June to go to, go before you would need, before there would need to be an extension.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have a representative from the applicant?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Dante Seletti. I'm with Morris Knowles and Associates. I'm the project manager for the, this project. I apologize, I realize I left my stance. I'm gonna have to hold this, and it also got a little wet on the again. But probably be helping with the camera. I don't want to challenge your IT folks.
I don't think we. It doesn't work. Don't know how it works.
Some institutional knowledge has been lost.
Fair enough.
I mean, Jim gave a really good description of kind of what's been transpiring up to this point. I thought maybe I would bring the subdivision plan that kind of shows, and I'll spin around so everybody else can see also, but this is kind of color-coded to kind of explain it. So this blue line represents the parcel as it exists right now. My firm is representing the developers for Lot 2A, which would be the pink line here. And then the residual tract would be Lot 2B here. And this orange area right here shows if we put easement for access to utilities. So the blue line, it shows the overall parcel as it exists right now. I'm representing those developers for Lot 2A, which would be this pink line here. And then 2B would be the green line here, the residual parcel. And this orange dash line here shows the easement that we would grant for access to utilities.
And that pops out where? Is to Riley's?
The easement here?
I mean, is that the orange line not into East McMurray?
Oh, East McMurray, sorry, East McMurray is right here. Sorry, East McMurray is right along here, so the, maybe we still have to work on our developer plan for this, but that's right now the access to McMurray is basically the center line through.
So, but is your drawing showing, I thought they were trying to cut you.
Ma'am, we're gonna have to ask you to come up and, if you want to speak in a moment here.
I'll just point out that that plan that you have in your hands is somewhat represented there on the screen, if that makes it easier for the crowd to see.
I do also have, I've heard of that, so.
Did you identify with the commission where the, that axis pointed? I believe I see it on a smaller drawing here, but it may make sense for the audience to see it.
So that axis and that easement is coming up right through here. And then, we had several back and forth discussions with the council on how to pursue because, as Jim stated, that 2B was gonna be essentially landlocked without access to utilities and to, oops, to East McMurray. So we provided that easement, and then also going to take, this is our plan of attack right now, kind of why I wanted to come up and talk about this, to see if we're, we're going on the right path with this. So 2A would remain as it is with the same easement. We would take Lot 2B and consolidate it as shown by this green boundary here. So this would be consolidated into the remaining parcel, which. It's that green boundary on that side, and so 2B would be consolidated into a larger parcel. And that would also solve utility and access issues because then we would have access to East McMurray here and here. This Marion Drive, I believe this is Marion Drive?
Okay.
Marion Drive, and then up to Crest Drive.
So my question is, is that easement to the highway, is that even a consideration? Number one, it's only 40 feet wide. Aren't we at 50 feet with?
40 feet is permitted per other special exception approval from last year.
And, and more importantly, I think, is the, I live just a few hundred yards away, how steep that is. I don't even know if we could, even with, I don't think a variance would even apply for how steep that is. Isn't the 12% grade maximum?
More than likely, they would have to probably consolidate or revise the one lot line down there adjacent to the access out.
One of those five lots?
Yeah, one of those five lots essentially would need to be revised, so you can widen that to allow for the grading that you need to get the slope on the road that you, that you're, that we require.
Yeah, but as it's presented now, that's not an option.
Correct.
That I'm seeing, so, you know, I'm gonna be leaning towards a denial of this based on not, there isn't an access to West, or East McMurray Road.
We haven't officially submitted this one yet. The last one that we submitted was showing the, the plan just showing the access easement and the, just the 2A to 2B split. This is the last one we had submitted. And because of the comments and the back and forth correspondence we had, this is where our next proposal is going to be. So this is kind of the direction we're heading, we were heading, but I wanted to discuss to see what the concerns were with this layout before we proceed. Too far down the road.
I would suggest that we, you know, to the extent practical, you'd be compliant with the codes and ordinance of township, and that may take some adjustments to the plan you have right now, as obviously we can't approve it given what we've heard from staff. So I think what's before us right now is a plan that cannot be, not be approved based upon the access and limited access to that rear parcel. So if you have another request, we, we're glad to hear it, otherwise, we're having to make a recommendation on the application before us today.
Okay. So if we were to, this access down here that is for, I'm sorry, this easement that is for access and for utility, if we were to possibly either widen this or maybe just revise this to be utility and not access, would that be?
It would be landlocked.
Well, we would still have access this way, as well as, I'm sorry, I keep saying this way, on Marion and on Crest.
Yeah. It's not gonna help me any. I'm not, I'm just speaking for myself. I think, I think we need access to East McMurray Road and a good access, one that can be plowed, the fire truck can get up and down, and the school bus can access safely. And, and I'm not seeing it. I'm just speaking for myself. I just.
Any other questions you might have on what we have thus far?
Yeah, my thought is, again, the staff are really good to work with as far as, you know, pointing you in the directions to make sure that you're compliant and making the recommendations and working with, you know, the different applicants, so.
Understood.
From a knowledge standpoint, they're, yeah, from a knowledge standpoint, they're gonna, they're gonna point you in the direction of everything that needs to be done and where they think there's gonna be concerns.
I think, in addition to the code compliance aspects, that access is going to be critical. So I think that's something you really want to ensure that is embedded for your application.
Okay.
Would you like to make a request to table? This commission table this application?
Yes.
Would you have a request to table?
Do you want to hear any?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Give everybody a chance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiley. Any audience comments on this plan? Ask you to come up, please state your name. The applicant has requested tabling, so that may be accepted this evening, but feel free to express your comments after you write your name.
My name is Lori Swirzler, and we're just here just trying to figure out what the heck's happening behind our house, and because we live on McNary Street, so the nursing home's literally in my backyard. And we're just, and it was a three-ring circus at the council meeting on Monday because everybody from our whole neighborhood was here and giving our concerns about stuff dumping onto East McMurray because we can't even get out of McNary Street. So I guess my concern is for you guys to take into consideration that, you know, we have any dumping to East McMurray from the houses and from the nursing home. And the rain today was insane down there and everything. There's springs all back there, and, and this is just a concern of the traffic dumping on East McMurray. So that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Any other comments from, only sir? Please write your name.
My name is Andrew Zaholski. I am the property owner, and I had a couple questions, really more so than comments. So this, this version of the plan as submitted, I just want to point out, does meet code compliance in terms of the requirement for road access and the requirement for sewer access. Sewer access, in that the sewer access can come down through here, and the road, there does have road access on Marion, go ahead, and road access on Crest. The, I'm in agreement with you that a superior method of developing this property would be to access to, have better access to East McMurray. Unfortunately, again, there's currently a proposal before township to rezone, again, we discussed this a little bit the last meeting, we had discovered that these five lots had been subdivided off by a prior owner, by a prior owner before I purchased the property. And as such, an exploratory concept plan had been presented to the township that did not connect East McMurray because those lots were legally allowed to be separate. I actually don't think that's a good plan. It was an exploratory concept. And then, but based on that exploratory concept, this body passed a proposal to rezone the entire property. I think that's a bad idea. I, I agree with you. I think we, eventually, we need to vacate this and have a better connection to East McMurray with a signalized intersection here. That's gonna greatly, because the school is right across from there, that's gonna greatly improve traffic in the morning to the school. It also will actually address a lot of the residents' concerns up here because I think this fine lady just said she had a hard time getting off of McNary because of the traffic on East McMurray. If you have a signalized intersection down here, all of the properties up here can cut through this property and have better access to East McMurray Road. I am in discussions I submitted earlier this week, and again, it hasn't had time for staff to review it, by submitted a revised version of our plans that will have better access. The problem is, it becomes a chicken in the actinamna. If you guys pass the ruling that this property here gets rezoned as single-family homes, I'm gonna be, you know, if all I can do is single-family homes and I have single-family lots here, I'm gonna have to keep these. If you guys are willing to give me some time to work with staff and come up with a better plan that benefits the township as a whole in terms of better access and all that, then I have, you know, then I have time to do something. So, so my question would be, would you guys be willing to propose, because township's gonna vote at the next, we, the public hearing was continued, township's gonna vote at the next meeting, and basically, if you lock me in that this property now must be single-family homes, I have no choice but to keep this as single-family homes. And then we'll, you know, we'll have to figure out a way to, again, put access in here, here, maybe get 11 homes, but, but this development will never be able to fix your traffic issues down here, which I, I and the township agree, there's a lot of traffic issues, and we can help if, if I was given time. help if, if I was given time. So my request would be that you propose a motion or a recommendation to township that rather than voting at their next meeting on rezoning, that you delay, you know, that you delay a couple, that you vote, that you recommend that they delay to give me time to work with staff to come up with a good plan that everyone is satisfied. Instead, you know, if you, if you tie my hand, I can't vacate that if you guys are insisting it all be single-family homes. If it's single-family homes, that, those are single-family lots, I gotta keep it. But if you guys are willing to give me some time, I can come up with a better plan. I'm working on it. I just, I just need time.
So I understand. I'm sorry.
I'm kind of confused. Are you the applicant?
I.
What's your, what's your relationship for this plan?
I own this parcel and I own this parcel.
And you own all the five lots?
Right, and I own these five lots. The, I have two separate developers, one who is trying to develop what's now in green and these five lots as townhomes, and the other who's trying to develop this side as nursing home. And I heard, I heard a lot of comments about concerns about traffic, concerns about density, and I'm willing to address those. Based on the public comments from the meeting, I'm just asking for a recommendation of time so that those can be addressed rather than a headlong rush into changing the zoning on the property, which doesn't get, you know, which basically forces me into a very narrow, this all must be single-family homes, in which case, again, I have no choice but to use these as drawn out and basically there's a, there's a private driveway. So you have one driveway that's going to dump five houses worth of people right onto East McMurray in front of the school. That's not an optimum plan. And, you know, again, I, I don't think that it's wise to, to proceed with the rezoning. I think it's wise to let me work with staff and try to come up with.
We're not here to recommend rezoning. We're here.
This isn't in front of us, right.
But at your last meeting, you did rec, you passed a, a motion to recommend the rezoning.
That's not, that's not tonight's agenda.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, can you add that, maybe I should have mentioned it as, as public comments, it's not an agenda, if, if you could.
I.
Reformise your recommendation so that, and recommend that township give me time to work with staff.
I think there's a, there's a pretty strict sequence of events that has to happen with applications and recommendations, and I don't want to relay to you that I know exactly the precise steps, but I don't know that that, we have the power to do that here tonight, even if this commission would want to do that.
I don't think you can make a formal recommendation since it's not an agenda item. But what you do have before you is this plan, and we're talking about potentially tabling it so that they can make it into a conforming, you know, plan.
To provide more time.
Yeah, and that would provide time at least for this, but what Dr. Zaholski is referring to is the long-term item, which is coming up, going to be come to a head on April 22nd, which is the rezoning. But again, I don't know if we can really make a recommendation if it's not on an agenda.
Well, because when some, because.
Is this non-conforming? Because this technically has road access. How is this non-conforming?
So I, I think the question that we're having difficulty here is that what's being presented us today is what's on the, is the other plot. Do you see what I mean? And then now you're talking about something that's not technically before us today. And so, I mean, he'll have the opportunity to go to the next meeting, right? And make his presentation there.
Absolutely.
And ask them to either table or remit, or, or vote it down even.
Even, yeah, table it, like you said.
Table it or vote it down, or approve an extension or something like that. But it would, is it, am I right, are we right that that's, that should properly be requested from a different body other than ours?
Yes.
Okay.
And today's just a subdivision.
Correct.
Just no land development, there's no uses, there's no rezoning. If this is a subdivision, we're talking about moving a line between properties.
Correct.
That's what's on the agenda today.
And does that, does these new lots meet our ordinance?
Does that geometry of a lot configuration meet our ordinance?
And that is the question.
Correct. And that one is actually not what's before us today. Could you show what's before us today?
Let's move back.
And to be clear, the applicant has requested that we table that.
Correct. So this is what's before us today, this geometry.
Right.
Which is non-conforming due to the limited access of the square on the right-hand side.
And we require, and the. What you're not seeing is there's, this is Dr. Zaholski's other lot here that.
Correct.
The next step would be potentially to consolidate these two.
Correct.
So just to be clear, today's proposal is to make that red line in the middle.
Right. We're saying that's non-conforming, so you should table it. They're willing to work on it and, you know, we'll review it and hopefully it'll be conforming next time.
Okay, okay.
Any other public comment on this item? Please. Say your name.
My name's Jim McLaughlin. I don't want to talk to anyone who would be here.
This is the last.
I've spoke in front of council, and I've spoke in front of zoning, and you guys are planning, correct?
Correct.
Well, I'm figuring out how this works. No preliminary plan has been submitted for the nursing home.
Correct.
Correct. The plan that was up here on that white piece of paper will be made public for me to review.
Yes.
Before we come again to talk about it.
Yes, just, just so you guys know, a few days ago, we did receive a package from Dr. Zaholski's consultant. Turns out it actually is an official submission that you will see at your next planning commission meeting for one of those parcels up there.
Okay.
And to answer your question, yes, you will be able to see.
It's a little last minute for me. I submit plans in my regular work coming up the day of the plan. It's not how I do it, or anybody else, so.
But it's not in front of us today, so it's not last minute because it's not in front of us.
He did last minute on Monday, too, in front of council. Then last thing I wanted to cover again briefly, so this is before, I live there. Today, I live at 334 Pleasant Avenue. I came out through my garage. Since the road work was done last year, I have to put a French drain in front of my house. This isn't a good representation of the slope and the trees. So I want to put a PowerPoint together to show the drainage ditch that's almost flooding over, flooding on McMurray Road. My concern, if we're talking concerns, is how do the fire trucks get out? How do the ambulances get out? When the tree felling operation, the dirt moving operation, the rock moving operation, everything that it's going to take to get all that out of there, to develop it onto a two-lane road on McMurray Road? I'm very interested in seeing their preliminary plan and what they're going to be addressing because right now, I got to put a French drain, all of my neighbors uphill have like a water feature squirting out of their yard onto Pleasant Avenue. I can't get out my front door. If you take all that away, common sense, they're engineers, water flows downhill, McMurray Road's going to be a stream as you're trying to get fire trucks and ambulances out. This is a three-year project, five-year project? They didn't develop it years ago for a reason. It's a swamp. It's a marsh. It's wetlands. I moved here nine years ago, and I told them, the council, I lived in Moon in the 70s. We knew what we were getting into. My dad was building houses. It's a 60-year-old plan. And now I got to have major construction going on behind my house for three to five years? And the rest of Peters Township has to be at the mercy of when they're directing trucks and bringing them out, holding them up, and flagging for the fire department and the ambulances to get in and out? That's the point I wanted to make. So I made it to the other two boards, and I haven't made it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'll be ready. I was here last May. So I'm just going to piggyback on this gentleman.
Can you say your name?
Tony Taylor Cavacina. Cavacina's been here since 1958. One of the first houses, I've got pictures of the Apple Grove where they built that and the Red Dog Road that was four feet below where the plots were. So the point here, I'm trying to say is, I'm piggybacking on this gentleman. This has been a fight that's been going on for years, that piece of property, because what he's saying is true. I said this last May, and I'll just say it again. You tear the trees out of that, it's going to be a swamp, a river of mud, because we all fight it every day anyway on that hill. And the big argument back in the 90s, when people were trying to, Dr. Katina and the whole, I was here, is that the, the grade of that property, it cannot be done, not in a reasonable way without using a lot of property to build that road as an entrance. So that stopped, and there was no egress even. So that stopped it years and years ago, and here we are X amount of years later, and you're still trying to, you know, make something work that for years and years, the engineers agreed, this isn't going to work. So I'm just here to piggyback on everything this gentleman said is true. There's a lot of water and a lot of mud, and you haven't even removed the trees and everything yet, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other one, anyone else with public comment? Hearing none, we do have a request for a table from the applicant before us.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission tables the recommendation on the Zaholski plan of lots.
Second?
With a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to new business item B, Coen Markets Preliminary and Final Land Development Plan.
Okay. I'll real quickly, I can kind of run through the site and some of the specifics behind the land development plan you have before you. Just to orient everyone, it gives people a background, most of us probably know where this is, but this is the Coen Market site located at the, at the intersection of East McMurray, and this is Thompsonville, and here is Beebough. I did some digging today and found that this structure here would more than likely adhere, at least like the last permit or the first permit I could say, should say, for this structure. This site has been around since 1967. More recently, in 2022 or 23, there was a lot consolidation done on these two particular lots here. So you can see the lot line was divided. And in addition to that, I'll also note that the applicant has been working with PennDOT on a project here where they're realigning this intersection as well as Bittersweet so that they can better align their project with what PennDOT is doing. And I'll also note that in terms of the site plan, their approval is due July 5th. So looking at the existing conditions in the site that you see before you, now that the lots are consolidated, it's a 1.79 acre lot. It is zone mixed-use activity center, which allows both residential and commercial uses. Currently, the site is used for a convenience store and a gas station that is located primarily on the, I guess it'll be the southeast corner of the site, probably takes up maybe 25 to 30% of the site. And the remainder of the site is sloping topography with quite a bit of vegetation, trees. Couple other items to note here in terms of the existing conditions. This lot is a commercial lot, zone commercial, oh, zone mixed-use. As well as this lot over here diagonally is also a commercially or mixed-use zone lot that also has a commercial use on it. But the remaining area around it is primarily zone for and built as low-density residential. In terms of the proposal you see before you, it is a, for a, basically to demolish all the existing structures and replace them with all new ones. In terms of what we're actually looking at, it's a 5,462 square foot store with a restaurant. There will be gas pumps with this particular plan as well, and it'll actually be an expansion of one gas pump. And in terms of parking, there will be 31 parking spaces. Vehicle access is provided by two main driveways. These both have full turning movements here associated with this driveway as well as this one on Thompsonville. And then there's a restricted movement driveway here, which is just an egress out onto East McMurray Road for right only. Also point out, there's some landscape buffer along the adjoining residential property to the west, and stormwater for the most part is handled by a facility located here in the southwest corner of the site. Some of the stormwater is directed though out to the PennDOT's system on, along East In terms of how this works with our zoning, the performance with our zoning ordinance, it's a, it's a bit of a mixed bag here. The store and the restaurant, they're conforming use. However, the gas pumps are non-conforming, and what this means is they will be required to get a special exception from the zoning hearing board if they're going to expand the number of gas pumps. That's just one of the requirements for any type of expansion of non-conformity. All the dimensional requirements are conforming, whether it's the setbacks, the minimum lot size, the overall size of the building itself. Couple issues we also have is that we do not have a building design or lighting plans. Building design, we do have requirements in terms of transparency or how many windows the building has, and in terms of lighting, for the most part, the requirements allow or rather restrict light trespass onto the adjoining sites. But without those plans, we can't determine whether or not it's conforming to that. And the parking is for the most part conforming in terms of the number and the size of the spaces. And I'll also point out, it also improves an existing non-conformity along East McMurray by actually pushing the parking and the driveways away from East McMurray Road. So in terms of recommendation, I have here a number of issues that need to be taken care of before I can recommend approval. First and foremost, again, we need to see architectural renderings of the building as well as also lighting plans. We can't determine any type of conformance with our zoning without those two items. There's also a requirement for stacking of vehicles behind gas pumps. We have not been able to determine that, so we'll need some additional information from the applicant. And probably first and foremost, what we need to do is we need to receive approval for that special exception to expand the non-conforming or the number of gas pumps, and that would be from the zoning hearing board. So what we're looking today is to first take comments, obviously, from everyone, but also then for the plan to be tabled, and that would be so that the applicant has opportunity to then get comments or to get approval from the zoning hearing board if they so desire to expand that non-conformity. And the other thing is, if they're going to go that route, we should make a recommendation towards that special exception. That is one of the requirements of our zoning code, is that if you're going before the zoning hearing board to grant, to receive an approval for a special exception, you should first get a recommendation from the planning commission.
Can I ask a question about the?
Go ahead, Priscilla.
Can I ask a question about the additional pump, based upon what you know right now? I mean, I know right now, when you go into that area, I understand it's going to be much, much larger, hopefully better than where it is now. But based upon what you know right now, what's the opinion of staff regarding the addition of another pump? And I assume another pump would mean on, the two more cars could be getting gas at the same time rather than, than where it is now? And obviously, right now, the way the pumps are located, if you have people waiting, that can, it almost does stack out onto McMurray and onto Beebough, or people are waiting to get through there. Based upon the new configuration with what you have, what's staff's opinion on, on the addition, addition of a pump?
Well, without knowing the exact layout of the pumps, although I think I have an idea of what they're proposing, but I'm going to just say that there's probably five pumps located in a line here, but it's not a line one after another after another, they're rather side by side.
Okay.
So therefore, you won't have as much of a stacking issue.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not too concerned with the additional pump because the impact's already there with the four pumps anyways, and one additional pump, it's not like it's requiring any additional underground storage tanks, it's not requiring any additional storage of, or volume of storage for those pumps. It's just another way and another means for additional people to get gas there.
And when you say that you don't have the layout of that, is that something that you should have by now?
Yes, we should, and that's.
And we don't? Okay.
And I, I will note the applicant's also here, probably addressed that better, but I'm pretty sure that's how you plan.
Part of the road.
Yeah. Have you ever been up to the one at South, South Park or is that Bethel Park, Brownsville Road, right at the intersection of Brownsville?
Up to the South Park.
Yeah, it's very similar to that, I would assume.
Okay, okay.
Is, with the regards to the special exception, I understand it's if we're going to expand the number of pumps.
Correct.
Was there another special exception you identified that could be a possibility based upon the potential designer, or did I miss the, just, it's just the one?
No, it was just the pumps.
Okay.
So if we do do, if we recommended this, you're, you're looking for a second recommendation on the, on the pump?
Right. Unless they decide to only do four, then it wouldn't be necessary.
And just to be crystal clear, this is a recommendation, if this was a site plan, this would be a final stop, right?
This is.
The land development.
This is a site plan. Sorry, I called it a land development plan. And actually, I probably should have said, well, the special exception is just make a recommendation. But if this isn't tabled, then yes, we would need either a denial or an approval or. an approval or an approval with conditions.
And I'm sure the applicant will speak for themselves, but is the, is the request to table something that the applicant agrees with or doesn't agree with?
I don't know. He's shaking his head yes.
Okay.
Well.
Is there anything with regards to the expansion or reconfiguration of this intersection, adding turning lanes with Pendott that hasn't been resolved yet, or are you in sync with Pendott?
My question is. Good evening, my name's Chris Peters, I'm with MDM, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. MDM's serving as the surveyors and engineers for the project. With me this evening is John Eby with Coen Markets. If there are any product or Coen Market specific questions, he's certainly able to answer those better than I. Staff does such a nice job here, I really don't have a presentation to make because you've covered it all. The architectural renderings that we are, we don't yet have the final design from the architect to, so the point of light transparency or the internal design of the store, that might be a month or two out yet. To get a building elevation together is something we probably can do, and it will look something very similar to what they just put, built in Bethel Park. So if you've been through that South Park, Bethel Park intersection, that new Coen Markets, it's going to be the same material palette, a little different store layout. The lighting plan we just received this week, and the delay there was trying to figure out the, whether you might accept yellow LED lights in place of high-pressure sodium, but we'll have the, those details to you with our next plan submission. The stacking requirements, that, that canopy is 130 feet long, and that provides you with, on either side, you would have room for at least seven cars. So I don't know how you would like to specifically see us display the stacking on there. If this were a drive-through, we might have little graphics in place for the car to demonstrate that to you.
We can talk about how to get that detail.
And then the stormwater, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. And we did expect to be tabled tonight because we do have some substantive issues to resolve, but we would like your recommendation on the special exception. We are pursuing that fifth pump.
And how will the pumps be located? Perpendicular to the road or parallel?
Perpendicular to the road.
Would you like me to just bring up the whole site plan? Would that be easier?
Please. So the pumps are aligned this way? At first one's in about 12 and a half feet, and then it's about every 25 or 26 feet where you'll have a fuel island?
So a fuel island, is that two pumps?
Yes, sir. Pump on either side, so that's room for 10 cars.
So when you say five pumps, do you mean five islands or?
Five fuel islands, yes.
Five pairs of pumps?
Yes. I'm sorry.
So there's a pump on either side?
So to me, that's 10, but.
There's a nozzle. There's one pump with a nozzle on either side.
Yeah, right. The way it is now.
Is it four on each side?
It's, it's two and two.
Yeah.
So we can get eight cars in, and there is no stacking room there, the access is so tight on that smaller property. So we were able to work, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to get heavy. I'll start rambling. We worked extensively with Pendott on this layout, to a level that I have never seen before, God bless them. They were very accessible, we had full access to the design staff for this intersection, and had multiple video calls with them where we might have six or eight members of Pendott staff, as well as their design team and the Coen Markets team, to figure out exactly where we could place these driveways along East McMurray. So from a, a site design process, that was absolutely optimal, and they're not requiring us to pursue an HOP for the property, which is way past my experience, last 25 years, so 28 years. So the driveway locations are functionally approvable by Pendott. We're eliminating that existing egress off of the top of Thompsonville, which is, was beneficial to the business, but from a traffic safety standpoint, land planning standpoint, suboptimal. So we're eliminating that and providing another full access driveway further down along Thompsonville. It's going to be a little steeper than you'd like, but it's, it's functional. We did provide the truck turning plans so that we could demonstrate the fuel truck access, the fire truck access, we'll need to make some revisions to that to address TPD's letter, but to the, to the traffic comics, I would say we will comply, everything in there was perfectly reasonable, achievable for us. We did, I'm just going to get them. I'm jumping ahead, you want to let me get up?
Let me just pause for a sec, just for a second clarity for everyone. Today, four cars can simultaneously pump gas.
Yes.
In the future, it would be 10 cars can simultaneously pump.
Eight cars.
Eight cars. The existing conditions, are they?
Because they're side by side.
They're side by side?
They're side by side now. So two cars park right next to each other.
Two, four, six, eight cars in here?
Right, that's right.
So on that new plan, take this pump and turn it sideways?
On that new plan, got existing are four pumps, we're adding five, but we're putting that linear.
Linear, right. So it's a line versus there being almost like rows, it's, it's one line, right?
And we do expect the fuel system plans to, back from the designer to reflect that on the next plan submission. So that will be more clear on the next plan.
So the way they're viewable, if you're on McMurray, it's the same view, except instead of them being side by side, it's just going to be a longer row and probably pushed back a little bit more, right? So that you're.
Perpendicular.
Yeah, right, right, right. But it'll only be two cars on either side the whole way down, rather than squeezing in those eight that we have now? Because there's one row that's right by McMurray, there's a two in the middle, and then there's the one row that's right by the storefront. Okay. And instead, or does this be two? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you said that based upon what you guys have seen at least thus far, you would have no reason to have a, that an additional pump would cause, cause an issue with the layout that you, that you're aware of? Okay.
Right. And before you guys can really make a record, not a rec, but approve the plan, we need to get the approval of the special exception.
Sure, and that's the tabling side of us, but as far as us making a recommendation on the special exception?
Yeah.
Right.
Staff doesn't see any issue with the addition of a pump?
Okay, okay.
In your coordination with Pendott, I noticed the, I guess it would be right out, right in and in right out on the upper entrance. I see the right out only, but that's both left and right. They maintain that is an operable intersection or operable entrance?
It will be a, this one?
Yes.
Will be full?
Full access.
Full access.
Did they have comment on that, or is that because that there's quote unquote, a quarter in from the previous application?
Uh, come.
Did they have any concerns about the operation of that entrance?
No, that was a preferred location because it's lining up with, so because we're doing this in conjunction with their intersection improvements, they did share with us the real alignment of Bittersweet, and our driveway's going to be functionally right across from that.
What's the timeline of their improvements relative to this plan?
We expect their construction in spring of next year.
Yes.
And we would love to be in the ground and maybe have the building ready for, for the interception.
Well, the building, when it's destroyed, will it be inoperable for the construction period of time?
Yes, sir. And they're, they're going to lose, they are losing part of their frontage, which I believe is already baked into the subdivision plan, or the, the lot consolidation. And they are going to have a, a construction, they're down here on that, that right in from Beavow, so there's going to be some, some guarantees of sight.
Their turning lane into Thompsonville?
Yes, sir.
And actually, that middle egress, the right turn only, will be into the turning lane. So if they don't want to go right on pumps, will have to nudge their way over to McMurray to go straight.
Maybe you want to explain what the improvements are that Pendott's planning to make to that intersection? Are there going to be turning lanes associated with this?
As, as part of their improvement.
Yes.
It's my understanding there is, and I'm not a traffic consultant, I, we took the good cooperation from Pendott. As far as we could presenting in schematic their improvements here, I believe there's a left, dedicated left turn lane that extends farther back, maybe close to, maybe close to our full access driveway. I do not recall if they had any additional turning lanes there, I thought it was a left turn movement and a straight, a straight right turn movement.
That would make sense.
If there, if there is, you know, Pendott obviously has their schedule. Is there an issue if they, if you move forward and we don't get these improvements from Pendott in timely manner? I'm not suggesting that that hold up your plan, I'm just suggesting that it may be an undesirable entrance location with the current configuration. Has that been looked at at all, or is that, in other words, is your plan safety predicated on the improvements from Pendott?
Yes. Yes, it is, absolutely. They're building that, they're building this driveway apron, they're building these sidewalks, all of the, the frontage improvements here where we would interface with them and typically go for an HOP, we are relying on them to provide. So the site requires that improvement to be completely functional.
Are they locked in to that, or would you have to pivot if they make a modification to their design?
That is a great question. I, I believe they're in the process of bidding and actually starting construction, so if there are any changes to their plans after this, that would be.
Does Pendott have to submit anything to us?
No.
Or do they have eminent domain to do whatever they want to do?
It's their roads, they can do what they want. I believe the bid is either out or has been already received, you know, or they've already awarded the bid for the paving, I'm not entirely sure about that, but obviously the utility work is happening already.
Right.
Great.
Yes, sir, I would be quite surprised if we hadn't heard something from them, they were so quiet, I can't say enough good things about that team. I thought.
They wouldn't want to surprise you, would they?
That would be a terrible surprise for me. We'd make it work, we'd figure it out, but that would be a terrible surprise.
It's raining.
I hope it's raining. Any other comments, Mr. Peters?
Are there any questions from staff that I can answer? I, I think, I'm sorry, backtrack. There were a couple of open items, not just the special exception, but the, with respect to the land development plans and tabling it, the architectural plans are important, the lighting is important.
What about the last bullet there, the stormwater?
Stormwater. It is big, that's big. Our design that is presented, I believe, works, is suboptimal. And Mr. Scanlon's comment, which is 100% correct, is that the best way for us to do this is for us to tie into the existing storm infrastructure on Thompsonville, that's almost 500 feet in, so we have that freshly paved road that we would be looking to, to dig into, to put in some new stormwater improvements. Never probably look like 525 or 550 feet of 15-inch plastic pipe, maybe three structures going in, and then us finding a connection point from existing storm sewers at the bottom, which, if, if the water goes there anyway, and the system that we provided, we have two underground systems, one of them's providing infiltration, as well as that hole that was at the lower left of the, of the plan, which is actually just providing some minimal rain garden effect, if you will. And then a level spreader, so that maybe an inch or an inch and a half of water under an extreme event, more extreme than that, maybe an inch or an inch and a half of water would be leaking out over the, the edge of that, that level spreader, which is a, basically a concrete wall, is buried. And then running down one to the gutter line for, now, watching today's rain and seeing the gutter line in other places around the township where this drainage condition exists, it, it would present an issue where it's eventually going to cause deterioration to the shoulder of the pavement. That would be a long-term concern for this. So I, I am very sensitive to what you're saying in respect to the storm sewer. We just need to have that discussion apparently, because that's a, that's a big number. We're about to have that resolved prior to this.
And right now, you're discharging essentially to the, looks like just to the gutter.
To the gutter, which is where it's going.
Discharge outside the right of way and, yeah, seep out down the gutter.
Yeah. Again, not self-optimum, but we are attempting to mimic, and I would say mitigate, what's running out there today, because there really isn't much. At the front of the site today, existing conditions, there's a little bit of drainage coming out here on the Pendott, and we try to balance that with post-condition. All of this other impervious area right now is actually running out to, down the shoulder of Thompsonville. So that condition exists today. We're looking to mimic that with a reduced flow rate.
Could you jump back to the PCSO plans?
Which one?
The post-construction soil management. They just one facility at the corner there? Or was there an underground one I saw?
There's underground.
Okay. Yeah, okay, there's underground.
We have one underground, we actually found infiltrated soils in here. So we are taking a lot of the impervious area to this, running it through water treatment facilities before we infiltrate it into the ground. We also have a larger underground tank, it's a little more conventional, to reduce the peak rate. And then at the bottom of the site, the more, the more visible one is going to be a rain garden, it's a couple of feet of planting soil, shrubs, trees, and it's providing treatment for just a portion of this road, it's not really doing much for the rest of the site. These two are doing the work for the site before it comes down and released on that double spreader.
As far as your release rates in terms of the design storms, are you simply matching pre to post, or is there a better of it there? It may be suggestions to look at some over-detection to alleviate that, that, that flush or that, that intensive storm drain down that gutter line. It may be a good compromise if we get to that point rather than extending storm sewer up there, because they both, both have a cost component, but one's within your control.
The lower design storms are substantially reduced with this concept. This soil, the soil down here does not infiltrate functionally. So the way we had to design this with the DDP requirements, the MRC standards, we're holding a bunch of water and letting it leak out at 3/4 inch. So to your point, substantially reducing the peak rate.
I think that'd be interesting to talk about on your next presentation about the overall abduction of what that gutter would see from storm to storm on our CFS.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Peters?
No, sir, unless you have any questions?
Not yet. Stand by.
Any public comment on this matter? Sir, please go upstate the name right of town, please.
Good evening, my name is Mark Sanders. I'm at 460 Thompsonville Road. And at least 10, 12 years ago, Mr. Wiley was on the board at that time, there was some discussion about a building that was going in on this property that didn't sit well with a lot of people. The words, "There's too much going on" was mentioned many, many times during that meeting. Our house, that's our driveway, our house sits right in this area. Mr. DeFranco's house, this is the end of his driveway. His house sits on the hill up here. Right now, we have immense amount of traffic on Thompsonville Road. I don't know if there has been a traffic study since the last development was looked up, up over there, which was, again, over 10 years ago. And our traffic has increased three, four-fold. If you check that out, it's going to be accurate. Now, we're taking an entrance off of East McMurray, in essence, at the corner of Thompsonville, and we're pushing all of that traffic down the road in front of our houses, which right now is not a safe condition, absolutely not a safe condition. The police have been down there, they can't, they don't have sight distance to check speeds, and the flow is off of the scale. We have regular backups in front of our house going up to East McMurray Road. We have regular backups in front of our house going up to East McMurray Road, and I would hope that you guys would come up there in the rush hour in the evenings to see it. Right now, Thompsonville is being used as a major cut-through from that eastern end of our township, from Bethel Park and South Park, to get over to South Point and onto the new interchange. We see immense traffic over there right now. We also have a unique situation in our township that hasn't been fixed. Our mailboxes are across the street. We are one of the only streets in the township, and I would ask all of you, if you have a mailbox in front of your house. We don't. We have to cross Thompsonville Road. And I realize that that is a discussion with the Postal Service that's fallen on deaf ears. Again, a safety issue. We're going to push more traffic down the top of that hill, and it is not a good situation now. It's going to be a worse situation if you try to push traffic off of East McMurray Road down to Thompsonville in front of our homes. Let me touch on water real rapidly. I heard suboptimal, I think it was the word that I heard. If you take a look at the, you have an aerial shot or probably even a topographic of that area, there are three homes, mine, the neighbor's house next to me, and two other homes across the street that get water from this hillside. And we talked about it before, trees and land suck the water better than anything man-made has. And you're going to move a ton more water off of this hill, and you said it yourself, Mr. Peters, that is a little bit less optimal, the slope on that street. You're not stopping that water. It's crossing the street and it's going to end up on these properties. Right now, as it sits, we moved into our house in 99, and it's always been a small convenience store up there. The noise and the light has increased monumentally over the last five years. With too much going on in our mind, what was being said before, this is not going to permit a tanker truck to effectively get into the tanks. The trucks pull in there now, there is a huge empty parking lot. We call it the truck stop. They pull in there and they'll spend 20 minutes trying to maneuver to get that truck over top of the tanks to load fuel. I don't see how they're going to put a truck in it, and we don't want a tanker truck on Thompsonville Road across from our house from a very steep hill we've already agreed is steeper than we would like to see. We don't want any roll-offs coming into our property. We don't want a truck into our house. The other problem with the noise and the trucks, we had huge problems with the garbage over there. They were coming at all hours of the night, and we chased the township down to say, hey, there is an ordinance. And they wanted me to go up and inform the, or see who the truck, the garbage truck was. That is a problem for enforcement, not the residents. The garbage truck has been cured. The fuel trucks come at any hour of the day, any hour of the night. Last year, at Easter, beautiful morning with windows cracked, we had a truck at 4:30 in the morning. The noise and the traffic is out of control right now. This is going to bring more of it, which is going to damage these property owners' ability to move that land one of these days. It's just not going to happen. The other thing, is this going to be a 24-hour store?
Probably not.
You said there was a kitchen in there, and right now you close somewhere between 10 or 11 PM or something like that? That's too late for us. That's entirely too late for us. If there's a kitchen there, there's going to be fans on this place. They have to exhaust it, making their food, making their chickens. We can't listen to it. And the light is out of this world right now. We have so much light up there now, they're pushing it closer to mine and Mr. DeFranco's house. We have coverings that aren't even coverings trying to block our windows from the light that we have right now. I know there's a bunch of other people here. The traffic, it doesn't work. The access off of Thompsonville Road doesn't work. We've already heard that it's too steep. It is, it is a very steep hill. That was part of the abandonment of the last project. There was too much of the hill there. The water, the lights and the traffic, it's just not going to work. I ask you to please do not approve this project with everything else that's thrown into it. It's not good for our homes. We bought our homes to have our sanctity to come home to at night, and we don't have that. And we're not going to have that. And I would guarantee there isn't a person in this room that would allow that or want that across the street from their house. And it's gotten bad and it keeps getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, please go up, state your name and give them the list for us, sir.
You take thread against the podium. I think you could slide down on the table. Down, down. Want the home, DeFranco? I live on 460 Thompsonville Road. 462 Thompsonville. That's right. 462. I agree, I agree with, with Mark says. But on, on the letter that I got from either planning commissioner or township, what, what they were proposed to do up here, it says a gas station, they're going to add a pump, which is fine, a convenience store and a restaurant. Now, I didn't quite get what you were saying. Is the convenience store and the restaurant together?
Yes. Yes, they're all in one structure. And the, the new restaurant will be, our restaurant slash store will be about 5,400, 5,500 square feet.
Mr. Peters, could you identify or, or, could you go up, state your name, please?
Can I sign in?
Please.
John Eby, also township president. So the restaurant, it's, it's a convenience store restaurant, just similar to the Sheets, where there's a kitchen made to order, food on display.
Sitting?
And there's some seating area, a small seating area. So it's that, it's considered restaurant by code. So it's, it's a convenience restaurant and a few.
But not like waitresses, you're saying you go, you order your food, you get your food, and then there's some tables to sit down and get, or you take it with you like you would if you stopped at like a Sheetz or like a, even like the newer McDonald's now, you know, you go in and there's only a couple seats. Is that?
That's correct. We stopped frying around nine o'clock. The store remains open for the public.
How many square feet is the building approximately?
54 and some change.
Gotcha. And then how much is kitchen and kind of that cooking area?
The, the seating and, seating and kitchen?
Sure.
1,500.
What's the current building? Do you have a kind of a close guess?
Less than 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's less than 2, isn't it?
Less than 2?
1,800.
1,800. And you say your new one would be 54?
54, yes.
So three times? Okay.
Yeah, it's a small, if you've been in there. It's a very small location.
It is, yeah.
There's no public, restaurants are outside the field, whole-time, gas stations.
I appreciate that. Mr. Frager, give me a quick comment.
Yeah, the gas pumps. I'm right across the street and I see that big tanker like Mark commented on, where it's at. We get all the fumes and the noise, it comes right across into our homes. And why can't you move the gas pumps? Why can't you put them on the end of your property, on the top of there? Why do you have to have them down there facing homes on Thompsonville Road? You've got plenty of room in the back up there. Look, I've been out here 48 years. I know every nook and cranny in here. There's plenty of room back there. Why can't you move there? And then that way, maybe the truck will have a better access to get in and out of there.
I've known this fuel design, so I don't have the answer to that question.
Well, I mean, it's just something to think about.
And, and I will take that back and see if that tank field can be relocated on the other side of the road.
Because I tell you what, sir, thank you, Cohen doing a heck of a job up there. At least some of the people in the township know there is a Thompsonville Road. I mean, we're a neglected area out there. The traffic, you've got a heck of a business. I wish I had some stock in that. Every landscaper within four counties is up there. The noise at night. And, and then you're going to put this convenience store that come down across from my house, I'm going to, how am I going to get out of my driveway? I mean, you're going to have cars coming this way, cars coming that way. Here, I got to come out, either I make a right or a left. I mean, it's, they, like I said, I'm getting up in age. I got to watch my eyes coming out of there. I mean, it, those of you who've never been on Thompsonville, come up and visit us once in a while, see what it looks like. We get every cement truck up and down that highway, like he said, for shortcuts. Used to be Hayes Road, now we got it. Hayes Road was a shortcut, now Thompsonville has it. So I tell you, gentlemen, for me to go get the mail in the morning, if it wasn't for Mark's wife to help, because if it's too much traffic, you know, I have my stepping sometimes, she'll get my mail from there. It's, it's, it's a hazard. I mean, people coming up from Bebop try to miss that light, so they'll speed up over that hill. And the people coming this way, the same way, they're trying to get the light. I mean, it, it's, it's terrible up there, and I just hope you folks will take that consideration by us folks that live up there. Thank you for letting me speak. Democracy at its finest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Mike Reikert. I live at 466 Thompsonville. I, um, I was here a couple of years ago, and I can't even remember. I got three kids under six at home, so time is lost on me. But we were here a little while ago for another proposed plan by, by Cohen. I'm assuming that's been abandoned since they purchased the second lot, right? You guys had proposed the plan. There was a lot of nodding and, well, we'll take that back and take that into consideration as far as some of the concerns that were brought up that had to do with that plan and existed prior to that. Back in, just to give a little idea where I'm coming from, back in maybe 2000, I moved out here in 2016. I live right here on the corner next to Mr. DeFranco and then Mr. Sanders, just one house further down. We obviously moved in next to a gas station, but as the area got busier, overall, you know, the, Mr. Sanders pointed to some, some of the issues as far as trash and debris and gas receipts and stuff that end up in the yard and the noise and stuff. And then there were some, some issues that were brought to our attention by the police in terms of asking to put an unmarked police car in our driveway to observe the gas station, some illegal activity that was going on. And at that point, we went down, and at that time it was Mr. Zook, at the planning department, and he acted as a mediator and went, went to Cohen who had recently taken over, I, what, maybe 2019, right? 2018? Something like that. Yeah, but it doesn't matter. They had recently taken over. Ed Zook went to him and said, hey, you know, can, can we, can we put up some, some screening for your neighbors and kind of mitigate some of these issues that they're having? The, the people at Cohen said, oh, yeah, absolutely. And then nothing. And so every six months, I went to Ed Zook and said, hey, Mr. Zook, what's going on? Have you heard anything? And he came back and said, oh, yeah, I just spoke with somebody. They said they're going to do X, Y, Z, and then nothing. It culminated in my wife reaching out to people at Cohen in various roles within their organization, all the way up to somebody with the last name Cohen, I believe, where they said their policy is to be good neighbors. I, I mean, like, their prerogative is to be good neighbors and, you know, so, sure, of course, we're going to do all these things and put up some screening and mitigate these issues and then nothing. So I would caution the council when we're, when you're sitting here and listening to some, some of these guys say, oh, yeah, we'll take that back and we'll, we'll talk about that and we'll take it into consideration that it's lip service and unless some of these issues are addressed, and I get that this might not be the meaning for that, it's for these special exceptions, particularly the pump and not necessarily the site plan in general, but I would implore you guys to listen to the other residents that are here and not just talking about quality of life issues and property valuation issues that'll occur from build, from tripling the size of the, the, the building that's currently there, but, but the traffic flow issue. So them moving the drive, the, the, the exit further down Thompsonville actually is nicer for me. Unfortunately, because of their site plan and then the, and the limited access on, it's, it seems like it's going to double the amount of people that are coming out on Thompsonville and the traffic at the light. And my, my driveway is just past their, their existing entrance on Thompsonville. I, I just, I, I, this is going to be, the, the, the traffic specifically is going to be an absolute disaster. I, I saw some screening, and again, this might not be the meaning for that, I saw some screening that they had put up for, to be good neighbors to the people that are ordering their lot. I see zero plans for screening to address the issues that Mr. Sanders brought up that I struggle with now, that he is kind of exempt from because of the existing trees and growth that's there and the fact that their building is moved towards the front of that lot. The noise, the trash, the, the, the type of business that all gas stations can kind of bring when we get to that point. So, so, yeah, great screening down there. The rest of the people are, are still, still very exposed. And then the lighting, I guess they don't have the plans for the lighting in yet. I'd be interested to see how that changes. They have painted the building, refreshed the existing awning above the, above the, above the existing pumps. Everything has gotten brighter and bigger, and I can assume that the, obviously that trend is going to continue at least by 3X if we're judging by the size of the building. Yeah, I just wanted to come and, it appears that this was, again, I got three small kids at home, I'm barely here, so, but, but I wanted to make sure that these things were being addressed from the jump because if they aren't, and if they aren't forced to address some of these things now, they won't be, based on my experience over the past five years of trying to have them be good neighbors. So that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Schmidt. I'm 31-year-old, 31-year resident, and I live at 102 Bittersweet Circle directly across from the, the plan proposed common market. So my house is basically, yeah, I'm about right here, okay? Right now, we have a little bit of a buffer with trees and landscaping. That's going to be gone soon with the intersection, intersection development. The buffer before the existing, that Cohen took over now with the new lighting and so on, it was, we had peace and we didn't have these bright neon lights just like streaming through our front windows, right? That's a concern. I hope we can, whatever happens and whatever ends up being built on this property, we hope we can work with the lighting. Something more subtle and more neighborly and respectful of our neighbors. All in all, I, I think the plan is, is way too big of a footprint. You're in the middle of basically four neighborhoods on four corners. You're wedged shot from any given house. And pulling out, for instance, I can see that plan, I can see the lights, I'm pulling out. out on Bebop Road, um, from Sugar Camp, making a right-hand turn up the, going up Bebop Road, all the way down about half mile, that's how bright it is. You know, it's just like, an establishment like this belongs on Route 19, and if you're gonna build what you've built down on, um, Route 88 and South Park Road, the big corner, huge, that's what you're proposing for a neighborhood establishment here, I'm not sure how our township and our planning board can, you know, before this or approve this. It's just way too big of a footprint. I think it's unnecessary, unneeded, um, the, the lighting really, we, I mean, I'd really love to see it, I know you put a lot of effort into, for your plans and everything, we could scale this back. I mean, you could, you could score a lot of points as a business instead of just coming in and literally bulldozing and putting up this humongous establishment in basically the middle of neighborhoods. It's kind of a shame if this goes through. It's, it's a big, it's, 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 the, the awning, the cover over here is 132 feet long, that's like, what, 45 yards? 45, I mean, put it in perspective, about feet, I mean, I quit, yard, 50-yard gap, I mean, that's a, that's, that's huge. Phew. Right? Um, you're being sensitive to your neighbors, this, this folks on Thompsonville Road, goodness gracious, you know? I mean, part of being good business people is, is being, is honoring your fellow man in the world, you know? I think it's way overboard, I think it's unneeded, it's unnecessary, should we scale down to half of what it is? You still do great business there, you don't even need to advertise. The gas station convenience store's been there since, what, 1961, someone said?
67.
57?
But it was, uh-
Everybody knows it's there. Everybody stops no matter what it is, everybody stops to get gas and get snacks and-
To go.
This, this size establishment belongs on Route 18, not in the middle of our neighborhood, I know it's mixed use, but good golly, we, we dropped the ball somewhere. And it's a lot, you know, that's, that's what I gotta say. I hope I made a little bit of sense. Appreciate your consideration, you know? It's not always about money. It's not, enough money. Come on. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
He's signed it.
Oh yeah, would you mind signing it please?
Oh yeah.
Any other audience comments? All right, hearing none.
I have an additional question, if you don't mind. Um, Pierce, the difference in the length of the, um, of the, of the cover, right?
Canopy.
The canopy, sorry, I'm also getting tired, um, of the canopy between having a four pumps versus five pumps, what is the differential there?
That is a great question, if I have a sheet of paper to scale.
Okay.
I mean, it goes from basically being a square to more of a rectangle like you see now.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that even, let's say it was still four, it would still be a row, right? Like-
The mention on it existing conditions.
Would that be right, that even if, let's say they would deny your special exception and you, and it was only four, would you still be doing in the middle row, or would you keep them at the square side by side the way it is now? Assuming nothing else changed? Do you see what I'm asking?
I do.
Yeah.
Uh, we, the layout would stay the same. It functionally, because this layout's awful, uh, for, for what they wanna do, you see the stacking issues?
Yeah.
How close the ingress is, is to the pumps?
Right.
Um, for us to take, to, if we were gonna only do four pumps, the layout would be functionally the same, uh, the canopy would be 24 feet shorter.
And, and the whole issue with right now with crowding and stacking is the requirement for the five?
Yeah, no, 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 I, I get that there's other considerations there, but I guess my question was that if, if you only had, if you, you left it at four pumps, right, you wouldn't realign it and put those in a row? You would abandon doing that and you would go, you'd keep it at this here?
Oh, to, to keep the four set?
With suspense on the project, we could-
I'm just asking, is there a reason why you wouldn't still go in a row to resolve the issue, you'd just be one shorter? I'm just asking, just, do you know what, what the answer would be there?
Um, it would still be, we'd still do that in a row, could you, could you sort of explain, please? We'd, we'd still be going this way.
One, one, one.
Hearing you?
Yeah, so instead of it being a square like it is now, you would still, it would be four in a row instead of five in a row?
Right.
You would not stick it with the same way where it is side by side?
No, the square, uh, the square is, was good for the site when it was originally built.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but again, it does fit in stacking issues and-
Yeah, 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 right.
You're stuck, you're, if you're the second person in, you're stuck.
I don't disagree with that, I was, right.
Yeah, this, this is absolutely the right iteration.
Okay, no, and I'm just great at that, what I'm then asking is so then if you have four pumps in a row, instead of five pumps in a row, would the canopy be shorter? About that much, okay.
In theory, it's one-fifth shorter.
Yeah.
And so it would, okay. Yeah, that, that was my only question, okay.
Yeah, it's not, it wouldn't really change the, it would be as high as the president is right now, it would be 25 feet shorter, 24, 25 feet. It would, it would cheat it a little bit.
What would that accomplish? I mean, would it be one less light? One, I mean, what are we trying to?
I'm just asking the question, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a feel for it.
The, the overall layout, uh, the points of access?
Mm-hmm. I'm, I was just asking about the canopy, and the canopy is lit, that's all I was asking. And is there an explanation as far as why, I mean, does the, does the current requirement just say you can only have four pumps, and so then they're asking like, hey, can we have one more pump? Is that as simple as it is?
No.
It's a certain conformity.
Right.
Or it does not allow, uh, gas pumps. So they can continue to have gas pumps as a continuing nonconformity.
Right.
And you can expand that by up to 25%, but you have to, in order to expand it, go to the special, or the zoning hearing board to get the special exception.
Right, okay, so it's just, it's, it's, they just, okay, right, right, I gotcha, okay. All right, thanks.
I noticed in TPD's letter, it's mostly, I think it's all, I believe it's all site-related traffic comments.
Yeah.
And I presume that's because the intersection design has been completed by PennDOT, and-
Yes.
Has PennDOT provided any feedback in terms of the stacking that would be, how this plan changes their plan in terms of stacking and the queuing of that intersection, I guess? Do we have a?
I believe one of the things that we're looking for, that gave, or, uh, TPD was looking for was a letter from PennDOT, an official letter stating that they are okay with this design, which we have a informal email regarding that, but we'd like something more formal. And I think it's in TPD's letter, but if not, we'd like a more formal, something from PennDOT.
Because PennDOT has essentially McMurray, and then the other roads are township roads, correct? I mean, they studied the entire intersection and how it's gonna operate, and what soon they did is they own the light, that's a question, do they own the light?
So township owns the light.
Township owns the light.
I, I don't mean to speak for PennDOT. My, I, I can only offer my takeaway from our discussions with them during that extensive back and forth. With respect to the intersection and the location of our driveways, this is a much better condition for this site with respect to that intersection, because we're taking our full access driveway and moving it away from that intersection and those turn lanes. That's as far into traffic engineering as I'll go.
And I don't necessarily disagree with that, Mike, but there's also the question of the expansion of the use.
Yes.
And how that impacts that intersection.
Yeah, that I can't speak to.
One, removing it the corner, bringing it down, I agree that's a better configuration, given that way the existing entrance is, however, there is an expansion question, I was wondering if that was layered into PennDOT's analysis, I would presume so, but I'd like to understand their analysis of that.
Okay.
I'm sympathetic to backing out of a driveway into a queue, I mean, that's a difficult situation to be in. I also heard lighting, is the canopy facade lighted?
It is.
Canopy facade.
It's gonna be the same canopy you have now, from an appearance.
Different, same canopy, same image that plays, plays that neon lighting? Sorry, it's horrendous.
What else is lighted on the building? Is there a facade lighted on the building as well? Signage and whatnot?
There is a Cohen sign on the building.
And that's on, that's on the tower, on the brand wall, yeah?
But you're talking about existing.
Uh, I'm talking about proposed.
Proposed, and there will be a Cohen sign in the front, and there will be a logo on a brand wall.
Gotcha. So there's no, I think there's a question of, you know, there's a, the illumination of the site, of the signs from, um, in front of it, thank you. And then there's a question of actually illuminated signs that project outward. So these signs here are backlit.
And Mark, just to be clear on the nonconforming part, if this was a vacant lot, they could not have a gas station?
Correct.
And the code allows for up to a 25% expansion of that existing nonconforming use through the ZBA process.
If it's spread.
And this is why we're only getting requests for one extra.
That's why we're only getting one extra, and that's true of all nonconformities in the township.
Right.
You say it gets approved by council or the zoning hearing?
The zoning hearing board to a special exception, for an expansion.
So the expansion of the, the special exception does not go to council?
No, it goes to zoning hearing board.
Correct.
And you guys are asked to provide a recommendation to this, the HB.
Can I ask a question?
Please, sir, please come up here.
Just so that I'm clear, so, the other lot that was purchased and has now been the, uh-
Consolidated.
Yeah, consol, the, the second, very L-shaped lot. Because it was consolidated, it now, um, enjoys the same benefits as the previous, the other property that already went through the nonconforming zoning process.
Yeah, it's all part of the existing nonconformity, yes.
Okay, so just because they've been, had, had somebody else bought that property, they would not be able to turn that one into a gas station, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, but because they own it, like that, there's the-
They're allowed to expand that nonconformity by up to 25%.
Okay.
Can I make one more point?
Please go, sir.
Thank you. Again, Ralph Schmidt, 102 Bitter Sweet. Seems to me, you're working with PennDOT quite closely, um, so our new intersection that we've worked on for years and is coming to fruition, to benefit our residents of Peters Township and make growth for the next 20 years, more adequate there, and, and to accommodate increased traffic and all the rest, I'm wondering if it's gonna last five years with this type of establishment, you know? It seems that this brand-new intersection for our township, with the benefit of our growth for our township, is benefiting Cohen the most. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, is, is this a, um, kind of a rendition of what to expect on your plan going forward?
It, uh, I provided that, more for material palette for the building.
Is this five islands?
Uh, no, that's Maple Park, that one's eight.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, oh, it's that intersection, that, where the ghetto was.
That's 12 islands, and it's not, they're not in a row, they're, they're side by side, they're stacked, versus these would be a line, right? These would be a line, here.
So this, this isn't a very good rendition?
No, not for fuel.
Okay.
Not for the fuel, but for the, uh, the building, uh, the building is, is very close to this.
You should only gave us this page, right?
I wanted you to see the signs, I wanted you to see.
You didn't help your cause by giving me the rest.
I, I can't stop you from driving by and you'll see.
Understanding that screening here is important, given the nature of where this is, is there an opportunity, I mean, I know we, I see the proposed landscape plan, and the reality is that the area along McMurray is, is limited for landscape plantings, it would be anything with, sufficient, right? It's, it's, there's really nothing, no opportunity for screening there?
There isn't, unfortunately, there's a sanitary sewer right underneath there, and as much as we'd like to put trees in there, that's not good for them.
Is there an opportunity to not have a backlit canopy around, of the fueling stations? I understand there's a safety concern, you know, safety items that we need to have light the fueling area, but it's, it's, the backlit sign, that is a lighted facade on the canopy, is that correct? Is there an opportunity that that is something that you would consider to look at with respect to that canopy?
I can't answer that question, that's a-
We have a, we have a fueling arrangement with AMACO, and there are certain standards we have to comply by, and I'm not the fuel behind to answer that question.
Again, I'm just talking about that ribbon, it's in this photo.
Red ribbon, blue ribbon?
Yeah, the, the red, it's the white facade, the what, entirety of the white facade backlit, or is it just the blue and the red?
Yeah, the white facade's in there, also there's recessed lighting, that's the-
And I'm not talking about the building, I'm talking about the canopy.
Yeah, the canopy is just the band, the red.
Is the white lit up on there, or just the AMACO signs?
Just the AMACO signs.
And the white and the blue kind of bands?
Is the curb canopy basically similar to this, with the red and the blue stripes if we're to drive by tonight, for example?
The imagery is the same.
And it's lit the same way?
It's lit the same way.
Gotcha, so that's what, it would just be expanded from what it is today? Would that be a consideration you talk to your fuel people about? I understand it's, I understand that downlighting, the under-canopy lighting is required for safety and visibility. That may go a long way. Because I, I'm sympathetic to the fact that there's really no area along McMurray to plant anything. I also think that there's probably opportunity for additional plantings elsewhere that may buffer residents, but that particular area, um, seems quite, it's, it's, it's-
Exposed.
Yes, thank you. So we talked about traffic, we talked about lighting, and we talked about water, I think Mr. Scan's gonna, you know, review whatever you put forward with respect to stormwater management, and I think it's a question of adequate outfall, do we, is this an NPDS permit? So is that an adequate outfall, determined by?
That's something the Conservation District, that we discussed with them, they wanna see the plans, they wanna see the calculations. So it is, my calculation, it is non-erosive, um, that, meaning I expect them to be able to approve this configuration as it is.
I'm a little light on that code requirement with respect to bringing to a Bed and Banks or a municipal sewer, so that's a specific requirement I'm, I'm asking about if that, if this is, meets that intent.
They might require some type of downstream impact analysis.
Offsite discharge.
Offsite, yes, I'm sorry, offsite discharge.
That's, that is it, we did look at that, uh, because we are, I'm sorry, if I get too far into the weeds, this is boned. We're looking to mitigate or prevent erosion and the outfall that concrete lift, coupled with the apron, or the, the fabric that we're gonna put down below that so that the grass can grow and be stable, be a stable bank, that water would come down that and hit the curb line in the gutter, and it's gonna run asphalt all the way down to the end. So, uh, through that, offsite discharge analysis, uh, process, we identify where it may cause erosion and why it won't when we're done. And the only spot where it can, uh, cause erosion is right at the outfall, everything else is paved or storm sewer all the way down to the stream.
Pennsylvania doesn't require gutter pan calculations, do we? Okay. Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, we have a request from the applicant to table this plan.
I'm gonna make a, a motion that the Planning Commission recommend, um, tabling the plan as per the request of the applicant.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a second request here regarding the special exception, this is a recommendation to the C and- This is a recommendation to the CHB.
I may be swimming upstream on this one, but I'm going to recommend that the Planning Commission not recommend a special exception to increase by 25% the expansion of the gas pumps and to maintain the floor that we already, they already have.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to new business item C. I do not want to mispronounce the first name, so I'm just going to say Beck and Fouts Land Merger Subdivision.
All right, the township is in receipt of the Deville Bliss Beck and Fouts subdivision. The property consists of four lots located in the Cross Gates neighborhood, north of Peters Township High School and Rolling Hills Park. Three of the lots are standard rectangular lots, approximately one-half acre in area. Each is improved with a single-family dwelling. The fourth lot is an irregular lot that is mostly vacant wooded area, is located south of the approved lots and several other parcels also in the Cross Gates neighborhood. This lot has access to Gateshead Drive and South Heidi Lane via separate access strips. It is considered a non-conforming lot due to it having inadequate frontage on either of the streets to which it has access. The applicant proposes a subdivision of the vacant lot into three separate parcels that will be simultaneously consolidated with the adjacent lots. Put more simply, the vacant lot's being eliminated and its land distributed in various areas to the adjacent parcels as shown on the screen up there. It's worth noting, the existing vacant lot is not a flag lot, as the definition in the zoning code only allows for flag lots to have access to a single right-of-way. As such, it must be considered a double-frontage lot in a non-conformity due to the inadequate lot frontage. This status as a double-frontage will remain with revised Lot 71, which is the blue lot you see up there, but the lot will be conforming as it meets the frontage requirement along Gateshead Drive. As is typical of double-frontage lots, access will only be allowed from a single right-of-way, in this case Gateshead Drive. Therefore, it's been requested that note to this affect the add to the plan. The applicant has already done this. The Washington County Planning Commission reviewed the plan for environmental hazards. They determined there are no wetlands, floodplains or natural heritage hazards. They have also determined there are landslide and mine subsidence prone areas. Due to these hazards, clause 13 from Appendix B of the Saldau will need to be added to the plan, and this is a first for me. Since this PowerPoint was prepared, the applicant submitted a revised plan that has that clause. Given that there are no remaining outstanding conditions, staff is recommending the plan be approved as presented.
Just have a question, like for you guys. So on the front, you described the four lots, and you give a total. The total is eight something acres. The numbers only add up to like four something.
That was probably just a discrepancy error on my part.
Okay, so there's three lots that are 507, 0.507 acres, and one that's 2.6868.
That's the vacant lot that's being redistributed.
So the total is 4.2 roughly acres?
Yes.
Okay, just over three.
I probably just hit the wrong key or something.
So what's the total? It's at 4.2 instead of, okay.
So that flag or spur up to Heidi is going to be part of Lot 71?
That's correct.
But it's in between the existing two lots, which front on Heidi?
Yes.
Is that grass?
Trees.
Huge trees. Nobody's using, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Terry Dye of Melissa 236, Gateshead, and that's, yeah, it's very large trees between those houses, and I've been there since 2002, and it's never been accessible, you know, to actually bring vehicles in.
Does it require maintenance, or?
No.
And what I'm concerned, which lot is yours?
I'm 236.
And Brian, you're 234.
Brian, back.
But Brian, you get that little strip.
Actually, we have it now. It's already...
Right, we already, we bought the lot four years ago, so we already had access to it all this time.
But it becomes part of Lots 71?
Yeah, it moves into yours as permanent parcel, correct.
Well, I'm just worried, would there be any disputes down the road if that's not maintained and the two adjacent lots that are on either side of it that front on Heidi, does it create a problem? It's, that's an awkward shape.
Right, and we've spoken, you know, with that neighborhood even at the time that we acquired it, they were like, thank God, somebody's going to actually, if it lives in the neighborhood is going to own this lot. We've maintained full hazard insurance and everything else on that in the event that, you know, there was a tree that came down or things like that, so we've been, and we'll continue to do that, obviously, it becomes part of each of our individual homeowners' policies at that point, so. But yeah, absolutely, that's been a concern since we bought it. We got a commercial policy on that lot, which is what, you know, what you're required for a vacant lot. So, you know, we've done our best to be responsible for it up to this point.
And it'll now be just absorbed into your...
Into Brian's, correct, yes.
Have you had any complaints or anything about that? Has there been any complaints from neighborhood, from stat, from, to anybody that you're aware of?
They didn't exist until this plan came in.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but there's, we have three lots, 70, 71, 72. They're going to 70R, they're all going to be consolidated. There's no other access points being developed here. They're just, there's these kind of odd 20-foot wide...
The right-of-ways.
Right-of-ways. They appear to be remnants from when the development was laid out. They're not even wide enough to provide adequate right-of-ways.
Right, they're not going to provide access, we're not going to have a driveway going up there.
Correct, how, you know, years ago when I first moved here, you know, Jim Dolatch was like, oh, they'll never do anything, but in that time Howard Hannah tried to buy the whole thing and do an ingress from Heidi and egress onto Gateshead, and the township shut that down. And then, you know, Pyatt was doing the same thing with it, you know, when they were going to build...
Rolling Hills Country Club.
Yeah, Rolling Hills at the time.
In your backyard is what was number eight.
Yeah, basically, yes, you know, we take our dog up through there to the park all the time.
Golf holes still come down.
Yes, they do, we still have golf balls everywhere back there.
Tell me some of mine.
Yes.
So this is really just protecting your lots, there's no proposed lots, or do you have any intention to build a new home back?
Purely conservation. We took it out of place, so nobody could come and just dump the property back there.
You're basically absorbing what was that lot into the three existing lots.
Exactly, we went back to the existing pins on the back edge of the lot, and we just all have longer properties now, and, you know, his goes toward Heidi and mine goes up the hill toward the cul-de-sac.
And there's no scenario that somebody could come in here?
If you're in conservation, there's no intent to develop anything, we're just taking it out of play, and the threat that we've had for, you know, a quarter century.
Is Scarborough right across the street from you?
If you leave my house at 236 and go up, you have one house and across, yes, so I'm right near the top, yeah.
Minimum frontage in that district is still 100 feet.
Yeah. So there's no scenario here that, that could any one of these, whether it's 70, 71, or 72, come in and look for, is there enough property that anybody has, is gaining that they could either, that there's enough property here or that there would be a, an access to then build another home back there?
Essentially have to remove probably existing homes to make it happen.
Right. But it would be...
And you're talking, maybe then one of those lots turns into two lots, that's it.
Okay. But even though I did that, where would the driveway, they would almost have to then do a shareway that have to do, that have to redevelop, right?
Flag law, we have to redevelop those.
Yeah, so then in the end, each of these three lots will be about one acre each? Is that, or 1.2 or whatever?
236 becomes 1.3, you have just over two, and then we're selling the third, the red plot there, that's a third of an acre, goes to 232, so there'll be at 0.8, I believe, 0.83.
Devil Bliss will have 1.32 acres, Beck's will have 2.043 acres, and Fouts will have 0.845 acres.
Okay, well, that's like what every resident of Peters Township wants is more land, that's what I would love.
It's a half acre minimum, even then, so.
Yeah, no, I just mean that that's what every resident of Peters Township would like right now, is a little more land, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Any other commissioner comments? This is a final plan recommendation, so there's no other, this is still a recommendation, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Snyder, oh, come back up. I did get a text and a call, I just picked it up minutes ago, but it came in from Brian from LK Land Services. Since he lives in McDonald, he's underwater right now.
Oh, it's fine, he got me...
And so he's like, I don't know that they're going to need me, but he just wanted to let me know why he's not here representing the plan.
He's been very responsive in the fact that he gave, he turned around, I just gave him a heads up, hey, we're going to ask that you have this clause tonight, and he turned around and had the plan to meet before. I mean, I only got it because I was literally just saving it away for the meeting, but...
Okay, I just wanted to give you the courtesy of knowing why he wants to...
Thank you. I wasn't too, thanks, I wasn't too concerned, though.
Were there, was there anything on this, you know, sometimes we, we recommend, we say and include these, is there anything?
They've met every, Peters Township Sanitary Authority has no comment.
Okay.
They just, the only thing from the county was adding, making sure that clause got added.
And that's already there?
Yeah, everything, it's a completely compliant plan, there's no...
No conditions.
Yeah, and I don't see any like, I don't see anything else here, right, okay.
There's nobody left in the audience.
There's no, may I have a recommendation?
I'll make a recommendation that we approve the Planning Commission recommendation for the Deville Bliss Beck and Fouts Land Merger Minor Subdivision.
I'll second.
I have a motion, excuse me. Motion and second amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You should have got to go first.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Thank you.
Moving on to the staff update.
Probably have anything to update, although I was talking with the township manager today, and, you know, one of the big things we're going to have coming up this year will be revising our comprehensive plan. It's been 10 years, some of you may have been around for the previous one, but now we're looking to do that, we're going to send it out to, for an RFP. But one thing we want to talk about is we keep calling it an update. The question to you guys that I want you to kind of think about is, is it an update or do we want to do a full rewrite that might entail?
What's the MPC require for code?
The MPC's very much silent on that, or MPC's vague in general, but in terms of whether it has to be an update or a rewrite, it's silent on that.
Cost-wise, obviously a rewrite would be more expensive.
Right, and really it comes down to, do you guys see that this township is headed in a completely different trajectory than what was envisioned in 2013?
13 or 14, was it?
Yeah, and maybe it's just as simple that I need to actually bring some additional information to you guys, but I just wanted to get you guys kind of thinking that as we...
I mean, I think resident, resident outlook on it, I think it is very different now than it was 10 years ago. Like I said, I moved here 22 years ago or whatever, and, you know, obviously the township looks very different, so I think there is some, some resident thoughts on what's, what was maybe a fad versus what a trend and what people want.
Right.
So I don't know, in my opinion, and in my opinion only, it's hard, you would think that there's some difference between completely, complete rewrite and targeted areas, or, and again, not targeted in the sense that you're looking at specifics, but overall, like what do we want to see generally more of or less of? It'd be nice to know, can an update be an extensive update that then is, right, so then you don't have to call it a brand-new start from scratch and pay for a start from scratch when...
Other than the overall extent, there's really no difference between an update and a rewrite. What I've always found with updates, they're always pretty extensive anyway.
Yeah.
But maybe it's a matter of that we see some areas that should just basically stay and just kind of maybe validate some of the opinions of goals or objectives.
Right.
And I'll be honest with you, I haven't read that thing cover to cover, I don't know how many people here have, so I'm sure there's something that'll probably add a date. So my thought process is maybe what we need to do at future meetings, also kind of have a little presentation of what our comp plan actually says before we even move forward.
I would encourage us to think about how we engage the community, community in a meaningful way so that there is not only buy-in, but some level of consensus about how this process works and then what is the ultimate result. Because we're up here talking about land uses and codes, and there may be some frustration, but I understand that, but this is the point, the comprehensive plan is kind of the kickoff point for those codes to be rewritten, so.
Absolutely.
We need to remake, you know, if we need to remake or adjust things, I think that the residents should have a say in that, and they need to be engaged formally as opposed to coming to a commission, and the plan is by rights.
They have to do the fact.
Correct.
And that's something that some consultants are better at than others, is, this must be a consultant-driven project, but actually, we would be driving it, but consultant would be doing most of the work, and that's how they do the public engagement. You know, we can sit here and have all these meetings like this, or do we actually go out and seek public engagement, whether it's attending public events and setting up tables and having some type of workshops here and there, should really get the, the public engaged. And, you know, that's something that we can talk about as we move forward.
There was, there was banners across the trail, there was notifications, and it just seems like nothing gets the word out as much as controversy, and I don't know how to harness that power, but we need some level, some significant level of engagement.
Well, what you do is you send out a letter to every property owner and say, we're going to rezone your land. That'll bring them all in here.
With social media being more popular, I think that tool, communication tool could be used more effectively.
Yeah, certainly it is definitely used when a new plan comes in and one individual takes notice of it. You know, the groups around in the area, if you follow any of those, you will see on the, whether it's the PT Moms page, the PT Buzz page or whatever, you'll see, and then you'll see like five or six different people saying, did you know this is here? So if we can use that, and, you know, in the same way, saying like, hey, we're going to, things are going to get rewritten, show up, you know? What I'd maybe recommend, and I don't know how you can control that it stays focused on what you want to talk about, but if we are having workshops where we literally say like, we really only want to talk about this this time, or else I think after a while people get a little glassy-eyed.
Yeah, it's got to be focused.
And focus so that, you know, we're only talking about this, and so that that particular subject matter can be, you know, discussed. Are we interested in more of a, a walking, you know, neighborhood thing or not? Or we, and maybe even it's just subject matters versus areas, so that we're not picking on particular portions of Peters Township at different times, but, you know, and also if there's any way to do where, you know, a survey out there that people do or do not respond to, but, you know, what are the top 10 things you like? What are the top 10 things that, that concern you? And let people, you know, maybe, maybe that's the first stop, because then again, if we've asked for opinions, we've asked for people's input, you know, we can only work with what we have as well. And you have a heads up of what's, what the issues are going to be and what people are going to come up and talk about, because we, they filled out a survey, and maybe end up being more negative than positive, because people tend to respond to those things, but that's not a bad thing if that's what we're looking to do anyway.
Stay tuned on that, there'll be more information as we move forward. We're looking to basically bring someone on board, a consultant, sometime over the summer, or at least go through that process over the summer, so that's kind of around the corner.
Is that a bid, or is that a...
It'll be a public bid.
Public bid, okay.
We actually, we did the RFP, but that was right before Seth left, so we kind of, we kind of scrapped that and started all...
Okay, okay.
We will set, we only received three bids last time, I'm assuming we'll just, we'll set the same three and then also put out for public.
Yeah, I already told those three that we will let them know, and if they want to use their existing bid or they want to provide with a new bid, they can.
I'm sure they'll want to update the numbers.
Yeah, and then obviously there's other methods to send out bids.
Sure, sure, okay.
Anything further? Very good, anything else? You can turn.